Okay.
All right then. I'd like to call it over the Mopet City Council Work Session for Tuesday, June 11th, 2024. Roll call please.
Councilmember Correll.
Yeah.
Councilmember Falkingham.
Yeah.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yeah.
Mayor Greenberg. Councilmember Homa.
Yeah.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yeah.
And Councilmember Page.
Yeah.
Forum is present, so we don't need to excuse anyone. So the first topic of discussion is going to be the rental registry proposal. And Nick, would you like to start that discussion?
Yes, thank you. So I'll just start by saying, I know this was a lengthy memo and I also know that it was very ambitious. Maybe ambitious doesn't even cover it all. So fully understand the response from city staff around feasibility and potential issues. Some of the questions that I have around the response is for legal ramifications. So as not to incur additional legal costs, is it, does it make sense to even have an attorney exploring these things? If there's feasibility, otherwise that they couldn't be implemented. So that's one question. And I think, I guess another overall question for the alternatives. I would kind of just like to hear which of those the city, city staff and Amber and US City Manager think could be implemented and, you know, without shorting resources and creating additional burdens that couldn't be sustained over the long term.
Yeah. So to answer your first question, my, my inclination was to wait to understand what direction council wanted us to move in before we did. We paid for legal services to vet this. However, the city attorney has been in receipt of these materials and I assume you spent a little time reviewing them. So I think we were hoping to land at something a little bit more, to allow this discussion to happen, get a better sense of, of the goals and, and what we would pursue as a result of your requests. In terms of the alternatives, these are, these items are all ones that we suggested because we can do them all and we could stack them together. Sort of trying to think through what council would try to accomplish with this and, and where we could sort of meet in the middle in terms of our capacity, of staff capacity, our digital capacity and where we could extend existing efforts. So I, I would venture to say there are probably more things that we could explore. But our hope in this conversation is to get a sense from you all about which direction you would like to develop this and, and what ultimately the goals would be of, of the ordinance.
You know, with regards to the, the scope that's being proposed. You know, we can change the scope at any time. You know, this is a pretty ambitious scope and I was dealing with on on the chain where they had software to do something similar. It was from an outside service and you know, they learned a lot from trying to utilize that service and, you know, what it was good for and what it wasn't. So you know, I would, my preference would be to start with a scope of work that would start us on that path, but not necessarily try and accomplish all of the particular aspects that, that the proposed ordinance would, would address.
I have the question, I, I don't know what kind of this sort of data we already own or collect if any. And where, where there's opportunities to sort of use what already exists. Cause I was, I can see the value on it. And one of the things that, you know, we haven't had a chance really to talk, but that I, I think it's worth sussing out is like, what's the number one value proposition of doing it? And maybe we find other ways to accomplish that thing if we can't do the whole scope. But I also just wondered like, what are we already doing in this sphere?
So
like for example, I'm sorry, but like for example, I know we have annual inspections. Do we have like records of the results of those and we keep all that, but I'm sure, assuming it's just raw data somewhere in a
It is. And if you are, and keep in mind, it's, it's, it's rental is annual and in owner occupies, those inspections are done at a change of ownership. And for rental, which is I believe we're, we're discussing here, we obviously get all owner information. And if the owner is out of state, we require the owner to have an agent that resides in the city of, in St. Louis County, which I was speaking with Amber, we looked at some other rental, rental programs like the city of St. Louis, the county, and I think Florissant had some. And they have robust programs. We already do, do a lot of these things, like some of them had like a hundred, hundred, you know, hundred square mile or hundred mile radius for, for property managers. Ours is actually in St. Louis County. We even considered expanding it out a little bit in the St. Charles or you know, some of Jefferson County, some of these other, we've had a lot of pushback on that over the years, but we, we, we'd like the idea of having somebody local. Because sometimes you get these large corporations or even a landlord that doesn't live anywhere near and you find it very problematic if you do run into problems. But we keep track of all that. And then for the people that obviously are getting those inspections, we make sure that their occupancy permits are up to speed. So we, we know who's living in the units as well. Occupancy permits accomplish two things. And one is making sure it's not over occupied for health, safety and fire safety issues. And two, primarily for the school district. That's usually when we get people requesting occupancy permits.
And I, so I guess, I mean, the issue there would be none of that's publicly accessible, at least not easily publicly accessible. Wouldn't that be true?
Not easily publicly accessible. If anyone calls to ask, they can get any, any inspection that we've ever done, they can get any report. It's, it's, it's all discoverable. It's all, it's all, it'll all be for freedom of information request. We frequently may get somebody that's looking to move into an apartment complex and they, they say, hey, can you go ahead and do it? Run a list of notice of violations for this apartment complex. It may be their child's moving in there, maybe they are. And we'll readily produce those. Usually don't charge for that. If it's a quick query, if we get a very robust or lengthy query, then we will say, can you fill out the paperwork for a FOIA? And then we'll, we'll charge for that. It's not very expensive. But all this information is accessible. It's just not on a, on like, on a, on a website.
Could you give me an idea just about the inspections, a little bit more specific? You, you have a multi-unit building that you're inspecting, right? However, many units, 15 units or something like that. How is that process implemented? Like what, what does that look like when you guys go in and do that process? As well as your findings and all, all of that data, like you just said, you guys are keeping that and compiling it.
So each, each unit, each unit is has a, has an anniversary date. And within that, it's annual. And so a month before, we'll send out notice to the tenant and the property manager and say, your inspection is due. And we'll get those usually scheduled the following month. We'll get out there and do that. If we find violations. They can essentially, if they get those violations corrected within 30 days, there is no reinspection fee. If they wait, that, that's an incentive to try to have the landlord getting those done quickly. If it's longer than we charge reinspection fees and we'll charge reinspection fees for every time we go out there. But once that's done, then, and, and we get rentals at the same time, just to make sure again, for over occupancy and to make sure we know who's in what unit. And that way it keeps, it keeps our records up to date. And that's done annually. I know Amber, Amber's being, being here now since I guess January, she's, we get a lot of complaints from tenants throughout the year that they have problems with, with rent, with their, with their landlords not taking the appropriate actions. I'd say we probably do on average, you know, nearly one a day, maybe three or four a week where we just get a complaint from a tenant. We'll either go out there that same day or within, within a day and go out and check that out as well. And so we don't charge for those. We don't charge for complaints. Some of these are, are, you know, especially when you're talking to larger apartment complex, some of them may require access. We can't get in there, you know, we may need to meet the property manager out there to get in. So Absolutely. If anyone wants, wants us to go check something out, we will go by there. If not, we do that annual inspection. That annual inspection is good, as I said, for the calendar year. If another tenant moves in within that year, we don't do an inspection. We do it on that calendar year every year. And then if somebody obviously moves out, then we'll do that. And, and I, and we've had discussions in the past, you know, about trying to get compliance and trying to get more and more people to do this. We used to have, we used to go through rentals. Then we would compare those to utility bills. We'd go to Ameren and we would also do Missouri American Water. We had an employee that basically spent their entire day doing that. And we had so many people in court over occupancy permits that we had to have a separate night for municipal court, just for housing inspections. Now unusual to have 60 or 70 people in there over an occupancy permit, not over an inspection issue, not over non-compliance, just the fact that they didn't come in and get an occupancy permit. Most people don't realize they need them. There's a lot of municipalities nationwide that don't even require them. So we took a much less aggressive approach and we just basically now update our occupancy inspections, records when we're doing inspections. We don't track utility bills anymore. It was just, it was getting to a point where punitive to our residents, I think. We weren't really accomplishing much, but more worried about people living in healthy conditions and safe and sanitary conditions opposed to making sure everyone has some pop of paperwork.
Yeah. As some, someone who did not know an occupancy permit was needed when I bought my house and found out later by a letter, I appreciate it not being a bigger issue.
Yeah. And we try to put people on that as well.
Um, I do have a question. You know, you had said that if people call, they can get information about like inspections and things like that about a property. That would never cross my mind as something I could do as a tenant. So is it feasible that we could consider updating on like the Maplewood page? Where I have like the housing information and tenant rights to add somewhere in there like, can I ask, what are my options?
We actually implemented based on your recommendation, the Q and A, and we can add that, add that to that. We do get a lot of complaints that go unresolved. There's no question, there are some tenants out there that are, that will be frustrated with our response. Those are usually civil matters, typically matters with the lease. A lot of times tenants want us to, they're having problems with landlord, they want us to get involved. And contractual like or the release agreement, or they want us to cite a tenant or landlord for something that's not really a code violation. Or we don't witness the code violation. I can give you two examples this week or last week. One was there was an issue over a laundry room being open or not. The, the property manager locked it because items were missing and people were leaving trash and debris in the locker and they, and that's, that's a civil matter. We didn't have, there's no code that says you have to have laundry facilities. That upset somebody and rightly so, but that was, that was a civil matter between the landlord and the tenants. Another one was, there was a water repair, an emergency repair. There was a leak. They provided 45 minutes notice before they shut the water off. I had a tenant that wanted more time. And they wanted us to cite the landlord. Well, by the time we got the notice, it was the following day, the water was already back on. There was nothing we could do. So, I mean, the tenant was frustrated that we couldn't take some sort of punitive action against the landlord, but we explained to them the water is back on, you were, were provided notice. And usually that notice is within the lease agreement as well. And it wasn't emergency repair. Those are just two that I've taken care of, taken a field question in the last like five days. I probably get at least one or two of these a week myself. And our inspectors get multiple complaints about their landlords. Yeah. Usually they'll just look up building department and they'll, and my name is on the website. So I'll get those. One thing that's nice about the annual inspection is is the, the, the tenants get to know the inspectors a little bit, right? And so they're, they're, they're a lot more likely or a lot more inclined to reach out to the city because they see that person in there annually. And so and all anyone, if anyone wants an inspection for any reason, they can either go through the contact us portion of their website. They can shoot myself or an inspector an email or just call the front desk. We'll out there and do that.
How feasible do you think it would be to come up with something maybe on a shorter term basis, not exactly readily available every day, right? Something that you could search, but some sort of a year, this is what we have. This is the information. It's all public record already. If we had that information already gathered, is that something that we would be able to say, here's our, I don't know, whatever, year report of these are these things, right? I understand it's probably pretty challenging to have a database that you could just go on right now and get real time data. That's probably a little bit too much. But yeah, something that just had that information of some of the things that this is looking for, whatever we would be able to legally disclose or, you know, release.
And Amber and I had this conversation. That's not a problem. We already have a software program that tracks this. I knew off the top of my head, we just had a staff meeting. We've got 42 right now that are going to court. And again, we try to avoid court. We reach out over and over again. Give you one more example. We've got a cracked lateral and you actually have sewage going into somebody's apartment unit. We've got an elevator that's been out for over three months. Okay. We just found out about the elevator being up. We weren't there on an inspection. It wasn't due in this annual window. And it's been out that long and the landlord said, too expensive. And the, the plumber said, I'm not going to fix the, the, the stack because I, I'm not getting paid. So we're, we're going to expedite that and we're going to go straight to court because this is, this has been going on a long way. Sometimes we, we always try to get notice. We always try to work with people, but when something's been going on that long, or when you have an obvious immediate safety and sanitary issue, which is raw sewage. We may take that straight to court, but right now I've got a printout and I know there's 42 going to court. And I can easily do an annual report or we can just work with our software company to produce an annual report. We can scan that in as a PDF perhaps. That would be very easy. And if someone would want to take a look at that, we could just sort it alphabetically. If, if that's something that we're looking for.
I'd be curious to hear what the rest of you, I think.
At this time, I'd like to redirect the conversation. I think the intent of the ordinance was to make it easier for people to find affordable housing. And, you know, so, you know, I don't mind having a conversation about the inspections, but that, that really wasn't addressed to the, to the extent that we're discussing it.
I believe we look at section E, I think is where it's talking about following information, just, just information that we have on hand. That's, that's kind of what I was referencing. So if it got a little off, I get what you're saying, but that was kind of in the realm I was looking at.
So for me, the priority is if we had a list of units that were available and the contact information, plus the grant, that's only, you know, is it, you know, let a man who ever included things like that. You know, a lot of people, you know, they'll do the research, but especially people that don't have access to the internet. They're looking for a place and Audrey, you can correct me, you know, if I'm wrong here, but the idea is that if we had a list of all those units that were available and we kept that somewhat active, that someone could go to that database. And we say, I only want to spend, you know, $800 a month. I would like to have so many bedrooms. You know, right now, it's, it's got to be impossible, if not, it's difficult, if not impossible to, you know, to find that particular part.
I think you can do that on like apartments.com.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's like for even like on Zillow probably, you can do a lot. There's a lot of filtering now. Now to your point, you gotta put your zip code in and know what your, put some parameters in there. But like, I think given how fast there's turnover in rental units, I don't know that it'd be feasible for us to maintain that.
Usually the affordable units, there is a long list of people waiting to go in there. There's not, there's not, there's not a glut of affordable apartments right now. In fact, I would advise it, there's very few. Audrey could speak to that.
I think we talked about this in the group, what we were looking for, what affordable mean and who does it mean, what it means to each individual, right? It is a lot of affordable housing in Maplewood, but that affordable housing usually is one bedroom, you know, if I'm being completely honest. When I look at what housing is here, it's accommodating for a single adult. And so then that becomes the tricky idea, right? Or if you own Zillow, like personally, that's what I'm working on this week, right? I can throw a net out there and catch everything that the person wants from the visual aspect, right? I want three bedroom, two bathroom, this is the price range I want to be in, right? A partially finished basement, right? And then the, the tricky part comes in of how that person is now funding their rent, right? Do I have a section eight voucher, right? Do I rely on HUD? Do I have any other type of shelter plus care voucher and all of these things where I'm getting some type of extra subsidy? And then that's the tricky part, right? Landlords tend to not want to rent those units, not because those people have vouchers. That's not the end. But a component of, I have to get an inspection from whoever I'm receiving the voucher from. And then Maplewood has to come out and do an inspection. And then landlord's like, well, there's way too many inspections, right? Maplewood may ding me, then section eight has to ding me. And then we go back and then we have to negotiate my rental price. Which is what landlords tend to shy away from.
And while there's 15 other rental applications that day to the same property.
Now, now you have four of the people who have better credits for better rental history and that's it. So now I'm, now I'm going to take that person, right? Because they just had a better, a better rental makeup, right? And so I think that's a little bit of the, the issue and/or it's just the turnover rate, right? Somebody might move in there and they may stay six months for whatever their own personal reason is. And now they're, they're vacant and it may find, it may catch, it doesn't hit my desk maybe two, three months later that I know that their property is actually empty. Or somebody has a apartment complex and they may have five of those units vacant. And by the time I get to them, maybe only three of them are now vacant. So I think it's just a hard, like a catch 22 of where you're trying to like, to streamline it. It's, it's pretty hard from that aspect of what I see.
And with that going down the road, the, the website that you're talking about, don't they gather the information from landlords that want to rent those places? You know, so, you know, I'm, I guess what I'm trying to do is bridge the gap between, you know, those that are, are being advertised and other ones that might be available that we, that we can have maybe more of a inability to identify.
It's very, the market is very, very hot. And as far as keeping that up to date, it would, it would be probably not monthly, it would be weekly because when we get the rentals, the rent is constantly changing. So depending on how long someone's been there or when they signed their lease, it might be $800 a month. But then you know, it's 68 later, they may be, it increased to $830 a month. I mean, it, it is a fluid process with these, with these landlords, to be honest with you. The only thing we know about is we have a pretty good idea of what units are affordable. And we have a, we have the calculation, the HUD calculation, which we can do. And I do that calculation probably four or five times a year from people that are getting out from the inspection fee that the council approved that ordinance some time ago. And so we can put this type of information on the website. We have that affordable housing overall overview link. We can put that in the Q and A to let people know it's available. And I would just tell you, if we start publishing violations. I can rest, you can rest assured that you're probably going to get some landlords that are not real happy with that. It's, it, you know, another option could be if you want this information, all you need to do is contact City Hall. It is readily available. I'm just throwing out ideas. We'll do what you want.
I just think some of the, I think the sentiment's getting a little bit, I, I, it was a 50% of our, of our residents are renters. So I think we're talking about affordable housing as well as all of our renters. I think we're trying to encompass something that empowers all of our renters. And so I, I, I think having the affordable housing information is always, always very helpful as well as empowering those that are paying whatever they're paying for their apartments to understand that they are valued in the community and that we want to provide the best amount of information we can have. So that way they're better to make a decision on how they're spending their money, how they're living in our community, how our infrastructure is handled in our community. And so if a, if a landlord is upset that his violations are out there for the world, fix them. I, I, I don't know how or the way to say it. I, I, you know, I, I don't disregard landlords for anything. I think they, there's a purpose that we have for everybody. But I think that at the end of the day, we've got to look at our landscape as a community and we've got to start stepping up for our renters and, you know, giving them the same, the same care as we are everything else. I think that's where I'm, where I'm looking at this at.
We also, we also might have more success and less cantankerousness. If rather than a naughty list, we do a good list. Uh, these are the renters where we just make a metric. If there's an issue, is it mostly resolved within 30 days? To your point, you know, like, is it easier to say, here's our list of people we've had good luck with? If I'm looking to move versus saying, can we talk about like the bad stuff, the court dates? We probably shouldn't, you know?
You know, we can pull whatever.
I just think public records, public record. I, I mean, I'm not putting a, I'm not putting a measure either one way or the other. It's just simply saying, here's our data.
We wouldn't go right back. We just put address and we would just put violation. Yeah. And there are some tenants that, this is what I'm talking about by frustration, not that, is there some tenants that the minute that inspector walks out of the apartment, they immediately disconnect the smoke alarm, right? So no matter what, every year we go there, there's going to be a violation for that. And it's not, it's to no fault of the property. That's the title of, of complaint I'm talking about. I'm not talking about, I'm not worried about frustrating a the person I was talking about earlier, who's like, yeah, and not paying their, you know, their plumber and saying, I don't care that the elevator's out. It's too much money to fix. That's not the person I'm talking about. I'm talking about, you will get responsible landlords that that just their tenants make those decisions on their own. And there's only so much you can really do. And you may go into one site, we, we, we just went in the apartment. There's five people living in a two-bedroom apartment. They never got an occupancy permit. And it's just, I mean, it's just, it's filthy, unfortunately. There was a, there was a paramedic call there and we were, we were notified of that. And, and I mean, when you look at that list, there's probably going to be, you know, 20 violations on, on, you know, one unit. So just, I'm just saying, depending on how that, that goes, and they've only been in this unit for six months. So they, it was within that annual inspection window they moved in. Never came in to get an occupancy permit and the landlord should have seen to that.
Yeah. Close four kids in a two-bedroom apartment and maybe with, then we're searching by 10.
We do, and the landlord indicated, because we, we've had a conversation with them. They were not aware that there were three children living there. When they came in, they did not fill that out. So that happens too.
And then we're looking at that problem of putting people out of buildings that they thought that they could live in.
So historically they used to, again, this is some going back to the court. They would basically give you 30 days. Now we say, when is your lease up? And we go to the landlord and, and we, we allow them, even though we know that's, we do not put people up. But if the same landlord, I'll, I'll jump back, the same landlord continually has people in there without occupancy permits. And that's why we check rentals. They're clearly not checking that out beforehand, but if it happens occasionally, we don't usually go out to the landlord for occupancy. But there are cases where we do. It just depends on if they're repeat, repeatedly repeat offenders, I guess is a good way to put it. But again, this, this particular place has a, I would consider a very This, this particular place has a, I would consider a very active and responsible property manager. And, and when this, when this, uh, family of five moved in, they said it was going to be two people living there.
I was going to say, personally, I've probably toured almost all the buildings in Maplewood, majority of them. And landlords or property managers are pretty, uh, forthcoming of like, hey, this unit is for a two-bedroom. And most of them, before you think issue on the key, they make them come, get their occupancy permit first for an issue on it. Most of the time that I've seen happen, I mean, there is a few people who have some turnover rate. With who's managing and managing their property day, sometimes it does just follow the practice. But most of the time, that's the expectation, you go get that permit, bring it back to us, and then we'll give you the occupancy. And it kind of helps them and it helps, sometimes it helps them, but sometimes people pay for a unit and it hasn't, sometimes it hasn't fail or it isn't passing the system. And that way they have that conversation early on versus like later on. But to your question, Barry, I know you were asking about. Is it possible to like maybe track what units are available and who's managing those units? I mean, that could possibly be a thing, but I think that's up to the landlord to know if they want that information to be shared. So what I do is I keep a running track of who have available units. And then when I have someone that meet that criteria, I send that landlord, you know, like, hey. I have a person with this, and I would be very honest, like I have a person who had a great credit history or not so great credit history. May have an eviction, may not have an eviction, have two people who have something available that meets each criteria. And most of the time landlords are pretty like, they're okay with answering back when y'all have something in two months. Y'all have somebody moving out or no, I don't have anything right now, my building is full. So I mean, maybe we could do a better driver staying like who's willing to share, like want their information out there and possibly share that. But I do think like the sketchy part that I run into is that sometimes I vouch for someone and then they become not a great penny. And now you want to stay away from everybody that I stand there too. So I mean, it could be one of those things too, like who did he really want to vouch for? Every potential renter and what is the risk of that long term?
So let me go back to Nick for a second. Based on our conversation we've had, and we have, uh, five feasible alternatives. In your opinion, uh, which, you know. Do any of those or all of those?
Yeah, I know, I know we have another topic, so trying to move this forward. I think, um, the major priority that this memo and ordinance is addressing is empowering tenants and information. Not just about affordable housing, but also market rate tenants, about information, all kinds of information, how to contact the landlord. What's their address and contact information, who do I contact if it's not them? Um, I think the central city registry that you guys referred to is a good model of that, at least for the basic information they ask for. So I think the feasible alternative list that you have, to me, captures everything I would like to see. I, like Matt said, I think if it's information that you guys have in the database or repository and it's available, um, that puts the ordinance back on. The tenant to reach out and ask, which isn't always easy to do, so I would rather just see it published so that it's available. If, I mean, so that they can get to it, and that doesn't have to be published every day and updated, but if it's annually or whatever it is, then. For those things, the naturally recurring affordable housing, uh, properties in violation of city ordinances. And general information about landlords and what the contact information is and who to reach out to if you can't reach the landlord. I think those cover most of what is intended with this, with those ordinance, so I think that I'm comfortable with those.
So at this point, I would personally return to. View these five steps, see if there's any problems from a legal point of view with these so that, uh, we could. Then have a further discussion, move forward with the, with the ones that, uh, we can actually implement.
Couple comments, um, that's, that's, that would be fine by me to do that, um, but. You know, a, a more affluent tenant isn't going to have, they're, they're going to make the phone calls. And then the tenants that need this either don't care or won't get it. So I, I know this is a good, good exercise, getting this published, but I, I just don't. I still don't know how this is going to help. The people that actually need this kind of information, right? I mean, if I go rent something, I'm going to make some phone calls, you know, it, it won't be a big deal for me. But there are people that don't have the either capacity or the wherewithal to make those kind of phone calls to get the stuff from City Hall. Uh, you know, those kinds of things and, and, you know, I. It's, it's great, don't get me wrong, but, you know, I, I, I guess this is a good first step, but I think. We probably need to discuss it a little bit more about how we're going to help the people that actually need this information, not. Not for market rate renters, most of them are already going to know most of this, uh, information, so.
It feels to me like part of the hope is that if we make it more obvious when landlords are less than ideal. That's, you know, a rising tide lifts all ships kind of a scenario. Like you're right, you know, someone who isn't, um. Technologically literate, doesn't have access to resources, we can put everything we possibly can on maplewood.gov and they still might not have access or know to look. You know, like I said earlier, I wouldn't know that I could call City Hall and ask questions. Right, but like, if, if we can overall. Hold the landlords, make it a little more obvious if they are not meeting expectations. I think the hope to me is that it kind of makes everyone act a little better.
But do you think, the, the point is that it gets down to the question of are we willing to, violating the law and then the court is about they violate the law? The danger seems to be violating the law, I want to be, um, that's changing. Um, it's just a question of what's the. What, yeah, maybe wants to be, uh, a Russian, but it's important. Um, typically what the court's looking for is compliance and the bottom to give, against, against, and then, so it's, yeah, F I X, which falls everything. Um, I, I, I think the, to Sean's point, just the mini grade details of that, it can get, you know, understanding what you're accomplishing, um.
Yeah, I, I don't think we're going to resolve everything today, but I, I, I think it was a very good conversation. I think that, uh, Nick, since you brought it up, uh, you know, if you would sort of lead the effort to. Redirect this to the salient issues that, you know, and then, uh, Audrey, you know, uh. I didn't realize, you know, to what extent you were involved with, you know, facing people and working with landlords. And, uh, some of the things that we've been talking about, which sort of, you know. We need to remove you from that and that's not, uh, I think what we, what we want. But it's, it sounds like you have a pulse, you know, of, of a lot of landlords and that's very helpful. So, uh, if it's okay with everyone, uh, to move on, uh.
I will, I will work with Attorney Graves and Councilmember Homa to move this forward and refine it.
Okay. Then item number five is a super lateral program modification proposal. Anthony, if you just want to, you get three minutes.
So this, uh. This request or this, uh, consideration that, that staff is, um, asking the councils, basically we're just trying to make our, our super lateral account. Or, um, it, it, it's unfortunately, um, as you see where I've shown the last time we've done it, it was in two thousand fourteen. I, I, you can see where we went from thirty-seven to sixty-five in that very short period of time. And really the main impetus of this is, is the fact that every home sale now, um, usually does it. I mean, if I would go back ten years before, we might have had seventeen, sixteen, seventeen of these that we would do, so it just continues to go up. We're hoping eventually it will, you know, as, as homes turnover on average every seven years and it'll eventually slow down. There really hasn't been any, anything in sight. Um, Amber's been meeting with some of the credit agencies and, 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 and some of the, some of the bonds that we've been passing and, and they're expressing concern that we basically have an account. That is, um, overtaxed and we don't really have a plan to fix it. Amber, do you want to explain, did I explain that right?
Yeah, absolutely, it has come up in our last, uh, at least two bond rating calls with S and P. Asking specifically about the sewer lateral account and the deficit that we continue to run in the account. Which has now, we've been dipping into fund balance, um. Prior to fiscal year eighteen, nineteen, so that's as far back as we've been tracking this, uh, in terms of looking forward. Obviously, we, we have budgets from prior years so we can substantiate that it's probably been longer than that, that we have been dipping into the fund balance for this account. As well as borrowing funds from the general fund to fully fund all of the projects that need to be completed. Um, so as we discussed in our budget work session in the spring, we need to figure out not only how to make the account whole, but do that while not. Appreciably lowering our level of service to residents.
That's on your property tax bill and that, and, and in fourteen, we went from, uh.
Twenty-eight.
We maxed out. Yeah, maxed out, we started at twenty, we were at twenty at that point, and then we went twenty to thirty-six for two years, two thousand sixteen and then sixteen, then we went to fifty. We, it was a proposition of all of the people, unfortunately, the estate limits at fifty dollars, because I mean, ideally that would make the most sense. And the million dollar question is if you've been paying into this program since nineteen ninety-nine when it started. You've paid in a little over eight hundred dollars if you made your payments, annual payments every year.
The, the only question I have with regard to that is what, I've seen sewer lateral insurance programs, I don't know exactly how they work. I can't imagine that they would be any cheaper than, or less expensive than what we're doing right now.
One thing that's. So a lot of municipalities, I think Brooklyn in there is an example, is thirty-five hundred dollars, a lot of them that will just cap, right? But depending on the depth or if there's stairs involved, right? We've got, you know, some of our homes are, you know, you've got the, the lawn might be elevated, eight, nine, ten steps. You're really getting to, you know, you can get lateral, laterals that cost ten, twelve thousand dollars, right? And, and so the, if you go to a certain amount, it, it's possible you could talk about forcing people out of their home. If you've got a twelve thousand dollar repair, we only, uh, co- cover three thousand dollars, that, that could be a serious problem.
Yeah, it, Anthony, I think here's my problem though, like. Okay, so I'm paying my fifty dollars a year on my annual tax assessment, great. My lateral line personally is slightly misaligned at the street and about every other year I have to pay an emergency fee to have somebody come out and augur it when it clogs up and backs into my basement. So like, I've already spent close to two grand just on maintenance because it's not damaged enough to even qualify. So when it finally does give up the goats and break enough to qualify, to then be like, by the way, pay some more. It's kind of frustrating as a homeowner, right? So like, I think I have questions just in general, like what are our average? You have the range, but like what do most of our costs fall in?
This is where we run the problem because we do a number of these in-house, right? So let's say I'm going to think, let's say we're, we're slammed or we've had short staff. Over the last few years, we, we've been, we may contract that out. So if it's a simple repair, but you're in the road, that's going to get much more expensive because we obviously have to do the concrete work. You could be looking at twenty-five hundred dollars just for a slab and if you get to do a vertical curb as well. Maybe it could be up to three thousand dollars just for the restoration on that street if we do it. But we sometimes even contract that out, so that's where most cities contracted out entirely. They don't have staff do any of this, right? And so over the years, because I've always argued to keep it free. Um, in fact, I would likely continue to keep it one hundred percent free. Um, it's, this cost is clearly going to be passed on to some people, some people are going to afford it, some people can't. Again, it's the, the idea that we're getting hit with our credit rating, which is the only reason staff is even here. And so by doing a, an application or pardon me, uh, an offset payment for the sewer lateral for every resident, right? Then that way, if, if you happen to be, your, your lateral happens to break when staff is available. And really the, the cost, uh, we don't charge for, for labor, it may be. A hundred and fifty dollars worth of, of, of repairs, that may be it, especially if it's in the, you know, within the yard area. Dig it ourselves with all of our own equipment and we'll basically just have to pay for the, for the line itself, the PVC. Whereas, um, maybe we are slammed and maybe it's in the middle of, you know, getting our parks prepped. We'll, we'll send Tote, our contractor out and that same identical repair might cost thirty-five hundred and four thousand dollars. So that's where it, it's tough to tell, we, if, if, if we do it ourselves. We're doing it for pennies on the dollar than if we're paying our contractor to do it. And so where it wouldn't be fair to say if you pay up to three thousand dollars, but everything above that. That's why we, we settled on the application season reason.
Okay, so is it, are the lateral breaks always urgent? Are lateral, so like, I guess my question is, I'm hearing that if we have to, if we can do it in-house, it's fantastic, right? That's economically wonderful and much better. Do you schedule these out so we can say, you know, hey, Matt, sorry, your lateral broke, we can have somebody out from the city in November, November seventh or something?
We have eighteen on the list right now, um, and, uh, the oldest is, uh, November of last year. It's a very small, it's a hairline crack, it beats the criteria. And I was explaining this to Amber earlier, over, it, historically in the past. We've had upwards of thirty people on the list, right? And, and the joke, the pun is a fluid list, right? It literally is. And, and, and one thing we used to get, you know, a lot of trouble, somebody would call and they'd say, where are you on the list? We'd say, you're fourteen. They'd call two months later, where am I on the list? And you'd say, you're nineteen, right? Because, because we have standing sewage, so we absolutely. Tell people that upfront, look, your problem's not that bad, but. Again, it was, it was a prior council for the most part, and I think Sean, you were, you were there. There were several new elected officials and they came in and they were asking, how in the world could somebody be on a list for three years? This is irresponsible, we need to get this fixed. So at that time, the council made the decision to use our capital development funds instead of borrowing off the general fund. And we, if you look at our budget, you'll notice in, uh, right around twenty nineteen. We transferred a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars to do a, a, a major catch-up. And we did, we, we did a lot of catching up, um, and we were, we actually had our list down to one or two people. And that's just slowly over time evolved and then at the same time. City manager and the finance director are going in and that's, that's what's brought us here, it's, it's not that staff wants to do this. It's that reserve or credit rating we need to, so we're trying to figure out the most.
I know, I don't want to tell you off, but we're, we're getting short on time and I've got about nine hundred questions, but for, just, just to start off on the first one, the math is the math to me. So when, when I look at where you've got roughly twenty-five hundred to ten thousand and you're doing sixty-five homes, that's sixty-five at two thousand is exceeding, is it's about where we're at. Um, so, so I'm confused by, by how we're, how we're, if we're doing some less than twenty-five hundred dollars, I'm curious how.
Some for, for two hundred and fifty dollars.
I mean, I, I think it would be helpful to have that as the range, just when I'm trying to digest some of these numbers to try to figure it out. And then it just looks to me like we just took basically the number that we are over and we just divided that by the number of people we had in two thousand twenty-three. I, I, I'm just curious to see like, what's the trend of this data, what's, where are we at in twenty-four, where are we at in twenty-two, where are we at in twenty-one? To just make sure that that's actually, I'm not saying you didn't do that, but it, it's helpful to see that so we can understand that as well.
Three years, again, because we had a massive glut and we had some that were many, many, many years. And so we pulled three years of data, Amber actually wanted to go back further and I said, you're not really going to get. Accurate data because we had this massive glut. And so we went back three years and, and, and because even if you go back just ten years, we're at thirty-seven. And, and it continues, it continues to rise. And, and it continues, it continues to rise at a significant rate. I mean, it's, it's doubled, but it's nearly doubled in ten years. So going back as far as two thousand fourteen, it's going to show we only did thirty-seven and that was a high watermark at that point in time. And now we're up to sixty-five. So we just, we took between sixty and sixty-five, which is what we've had the last three years. I took the high number at sixty-five and that's what we did. We, we, we basically divided it by what we had to buy out. We bring in about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars a year in revenue. Through that fifty dollar, uh, assessment.
Yeah, I, I just thinking about that because I, I know that we also have, in order to qualify, you have to pay to have that sewer cambered. So you're looking, I don't even know what that called. Last time I paid for a lot, it was like three hundred and fifty bucks. So now we're sitting at a thousand bucks, right? And I, that, that cost to me, you're already, I'm already paying a tax. Right? To assure my sewer lateral is getting repaired and then I get to come out another thousand bucks. And just looking at. Yeah, other municipalities as well. I, I think you put some that, uh, maybe move a little bit more towards. More costly as opposed to like Shrews Bay or something that could be a little bit cheaper. I don't even say most in counties unincorporated, you know, and I know they're bigger, but. You know, theirs is the same, half the tax and you don't have to pay anything. So.
A lot of those have PVC. That's the difference and they don't.
So it's, in a separate, I can summarize, obviously we can't afford to continue. We need to make up the shortfall financially. We have two options. One is to cap the city's costs. The other one is to cap the residents' costs. Uh, I think the decision that we have to make is which one do we want to do in that one number. And as far as the details, we can, we can, uh, ask those questions and, you know, but we, we need to get the, the budget. Under control with regards to the sewer lateral program. So, uh. In, in, in the seven hundred and fifty dollars per resident. Uh, do you think that we would be able to maintain that number for, uh?
Several years. And it's again, and, and, and right now, uh, we just hired, we had a, a new employee start today for the first time and. Um, three and a half years I'm fully staffed. So that, that's a huge, my, my, my ability to maintain a huge, to maintain full staff. Is, is, is critical.
So, does everyone agree that we need to do something, right?
Well, we need to do something, but we need to have more discussion. Cause I'm not, I'm not convinced that this is the best way to go.
I think, yeah, adding into that list, other than capping the city's costs or the residence cost, exploring other mechanisms. To fund this, if there are any, I think should be part of the discussion as well.
I think if possible too, I would really like to see a breakdown of numbers over the last couple of years of like. Here's the number that were under five hundred dollars to fix versus five hundred to a thousand, or just something to help. Us better understand the spread of cost and quantity. Cause like if there's nineteen people, nineteen houses on the list. But fifteen of them are estimated to be under a five hundred dollar repair. That's a very different scenario to me than necessitating saying. Your repair is less than seven hundred and fifty dollars, but you still have to pay that.
Yeah, I mean, I completely understand that. I just, again, it's, it depends on which ones we do or which ones a contractor does.
Well, we can bring it up in a, another work session.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, at this point, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? The, the work session is adjourned and we'll take a five-minute recess before we start the regular council meeting.